Call this meeting to order. The City Commission, Río Grande City, Tuesday, October 17th, 2017, approximately 6:02 PM. Here in Commission Chambers, City Hall, 5332 East US Highway D3, Suite A, here in Río Grande City, Texas. This time we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Garza, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Jones.
All right. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to get together and conduct any business. We ask that you guide us to make the right decisions. We ask, Lord, that you continue blessing Río Grande. We ask you, Lord, that you bless all the people that have been involved with those hurricanes and those disasters and the people in Las Vegas. We ask that you bless their families and friends. We ask you, Lord, to bless this state and bless this country. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one individual.
This time we have roll call and finding a quorum. Ms. Peña.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Salinas. Commissioner Salinas is absent. Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Next business and orders, item 1C, departmental reports. You got a couple?
Nope. I think everybody was, uh...
I think they said they covered it.
All right.
They're not here. We're good.
Want to have a quick meeting? Is that the... (laughing). All right, all right, moving along, okay.
Well, yeah.
Enough said, all right. One, uh, next business and orders, item 1D, reading of proclamation designating October 8th to October 14th as Fire Prevention Week. 1D. And this proclamation, Fire Prevention Week 2017, whereas the city of Río Grande City, Texas, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Río Grande City, and whereas US fire departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and whereas US home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority, 78% of all US fire deaths, and whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home construction, and whereas many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, and whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as 1 to 2 minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds, and whereas a home fire escape plan provides a skillset and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation, and whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits: from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas, home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household, and whereas practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. Whereas, Río Grande City's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Río Grande City's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out", effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Therefore, I, Villarreal, Mayor of the great city of Río Grande City, do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. I urge all people of Río Grande City to find, develop, a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Río Grande City's fire and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2017. And at this time, I just want to thank Chief Reyes. I know they did, uh, the fire department, for doing a tremendous job here at the schools with presentations. They were excellent presentations, and obviously, that's something that we need to continue to do to educate young ones. And, um, if you'd like to, care to comment on that, Chief?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We had Fire Prevention Week starting Tuesday. It started from October the 8th through the 14th to its Friday. So, we did live presentations to all the schools in Río Grande. It was about eight or 10 schools. We're continuing this week to do all the TMCs and learning centers throughout the month. So, it's a little bit different for those smaller kids, because, you know, they're not still to that age. But it's been real progressive and really important for those kids. Uh, we're getting a lot of good feedback from the people, the audience, parents and teachers. So, you know, it's been going good on the month of October.
Just want to say, sir, the skits are wonderful. I don't know who comes up with the skits, but they're, they're great, sir.
They're actually the two clowns.
They're, they're the, the two clowns. (laughing). Well, they're over here. Multiple duties and responsibilities and obviously abilities. But again, just to commend you, sir, it's a great presentation and the kids are definitely well-attended and the children take good, uh, reports from them as far as, uh, how the whole scheme and educating them and again, making a, or stressing the points. So again, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Making, making our community safe too. I was talking to, uh, our city manager and, uh, I'm not gonna mention the locations, but even whole Río Grande accountable for water pressure and, and what's going on with our, with our infrastructure when it comes to water pressure. That's very important too, so we appreciate what you do for Río Grande. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Moving along, at this time is, uh, item 1E, Public Forum. We have Mr. Oliva Rubio, Consulado de México in Macallan. We have Mr. Rubio.
We have, uh, in place of her, we have Mr. Lorenzo Fuerces Prisciano Muria.
Yes.
Pasele.
Welcome, sir.
Bienvenidos a nuestra hermosa y gran ciudad, sir, de Río Grande City.
Gracias, gracias. ¿Puedo continuar en español, verdad?
Sí.
Porque inglés todavía tendría que estar a la altura de ustedes. Gracias. Distinguidas autoridades de Río Grande. Es un honor estar aquí en representación del Consulado de México. Uh, antes que nada, quiero transmitirles un saludo del consul Guillermo Dorica. Uh, bajo su administración, hemos visto ese apoyo que las autoridades encabezadas por ustedes de Río Grande han tenido a bien preocuparse por el bienestar de la comunidad mexicana en este lugar. Y en ese sentido también el Consulado de México ha correspondido, trayendo lo que le llamamos Consulado Móvil a Río Grande. Por diversas ocasiones, lo hemos hecho cada año, y hoy no es la excepción. El próximo 28 de agosto, con el apoyo de ustedes, se realizará el Consulado Móvil aquí en Río Grande. Y, uh, ya hemos programado para el próximo año. Me permito decirles una nueva, una nueva jornada de Consulado Móvil, en donde está también escogida esta ciudad Río Grande, gracias al apoyo de ustedes y de la comunidad mexicana. El Consulado Móvil tiene como objetivo acercarse a la comunidad mexicana, llevar los, los servicios del Consulado, entre ellos expedición de pasaportes, de matrículas consulares, mejor conocidas como ID's, y, y también lo que se refiere a solicitudes de credenciales para votar. A partir del año pasado, la, la, el Instituto Nacional Electoral, que es el organismo que se encarga de organizar las elecciones en México, ha tenido también a bien, eh, extender a los mexicanos que viven en el exterior la posibilidad de ejercer su derecho al voto. Entonces, el Consulado de México recibe las solicitudes para que esos mexicanos después vía correo, eh, puedan recibir directamente del Instituto Nacional Electoral de México esa credencial que les va a permitir participar en las elecciones de 2018 para presidente de la república y para senadores, es decir, para elecciones federales. También hay otros servicios que se ofrecen en el Consulado Móvil que son relacionados con la salud, ofrecer toda la información relacionada con el sistema de salud para que se beneficien los, los mexicanos y también pues como una forma de tener una comunidad sana en ese aspecto. Se ofrecen también otros, otras, otros apoyos en materia de asesoría legal, que le llaman defensoría de los mexicanos del exterior, en lo que corresponde a la figura consular que se llama protección consular, que está, este, como se llama, amparada por el derecho internacional. Eso, eso es cuando los mexicanos tienen algún problema, no tienen quien los apoya, está el Consulado para apoyarlos en todas sus necesidades o asesorales cuando tienen algún proceso judicial, o en este caso migratorio. Y habrá otra, otras, otra información que es de, y vital interés, como es la doble nacionalidad. Aquellas personas que nacieron aquí son nacionales estadounidenses, pero también tienen derecho a la nacionalidad mexicana, solo llevando a cabo un previo registro muy sencillo. Traigo información que con el apoyo de ustedes me voy a permitir dejarla para, para las personas que lo quieran, la quieran obtener, y también tenemos información relacionada a aquellas personas que han venido a este país y tienen ya un estatus legal por algún tiempo y pueden optar por la ciudadanía estadounidense. En fin, les agradezco mucho y nuevamente mis felicitaciones por el apoyo y mi reconocimiento que están dando a la comunidad mexicana. Gracias.
Yeah, gracias.
Una pregunta, señor, una pregunta. Uh, puede, usted elaborar un poquito más en lo que quiere decir, lo que es móvil?
Consulado Móvil, por supuesto. El Consulado Móvil es una figura consular que está contemplada desde el punto de vista legal y del punto de vista administrativo y por lo tanto presupuestario. Quiere decir llevar el servicio o la mayoría de los servicios que tiene el Consulado en su sede, en sus instalaciones propiamente, a un lugar donde hay una comunidad mexicana que requiere de esos servicios y que por razones de distancia o por otras cuestiones tal vez de seguridad, no pueden trasladarse con la, con la facilidad que lo hacen otros, a la sede. Entonces, la sede va hacia ellos. Y, uh, en todo, a todas las, eh, representaciones consulares existe un programa que le llama de Consulados Móviles. Nosotros tenemos solo tres consulados atendiendo a que solo tenemos tres condados. Eh, la distancia geográfica no es grande, entonces la mayoría de las personas pueden acudir con nosotros. Pero también para beneficiarlos en relación de funciones de tiempo, abrimos el Consulado los sábados, pero en sede. Ese no sería el Consulado Móvil. Consulado Móvil es cuando el Consulado de acuerdo al derecho internacional, que es una figura, como lo dije, eh, garantizada por la Convención de, de bienes de relaciones consulares, dice que el estado tiene la responsabilidad de velar por sus ciudadanos cuando están en el exterior. Entonces, establece un Consulado Móvil en una sede, sí? Tiene una bandera, tiene un estatus diplomático allí la sede, pero ese Consulado Móvil como responsabilidad del estado puede trasladarse con los permisos adecuados, con los apoyos de las autoridades, con la anuencia de las autoridades, se traslada oficialmente a un lugar, como dije, donde una comunidad mexicana lo requiere. Eso es lo, lo que entendemos por Consulado Móvil. Consulado es decir, los servicios del, del Consulado. Móvil porque se mueve, diríamos. Una figura que literalmente quiere decir llevar cerca de, de la comunidad, en este caso mexicana, al Consulado.
And Mayor Commissioners, they, han pedido usar la, la, la locación aquí para set up the mobiles, Consulado, here, para abreselo al público, que vengan aquí en la ciudad, para que no tengan que ir a San Macallan.
Yes, I was gonna ask the question more exactly, where and what day and what hour?
Sí, como no, es el día 28, como lo ha dicho el señor Pérez. Eh, con el apoyo del City Hall, en las instalaciones de aquí. Ya, el sábado 28. Comienza a las 8 de la mañana. Es con previa cita, sí? Allí en la información que vamos a proporcionar estarán los teléfonos y la, el sitio electrónico donde pueden hacer su cita.
Will we put this up on the, on the, the channel?
Yes, and what they'll do is set up tables here with computers, so they provide the same services they provide in the Consulado in Macallan. They'll have them here, so people can, from the community, can come here, take care of passports, whatever they need to do.
And you think they'll do this every month?
No. Como le decía, eh, de conformidad con el programa que tiene establecido el Gobierno de México, de consulados móviles, es decir, de, de, de llevar fuera de la sede oficial los, los servicios consulares, eh, el programa que tiene para el Consulado de México en Macallan, que es el que tiene la responsabilidad consular para este condado, esta ciudad, solamente hay autorizados tres, tres jornadas móviles, sí? Y de las cuales, esas tres cada año se designa a Río Grande por la buena experiencia que ha tenido y como digo, por el apoyo de las autoridades que nos han dado para realizar esta, esta jornada móvil. Entonces, de tres consulados, Río Grande, en los últimos años siempre ha estado, y como permití anunciarlo, el próximo año también va a estar. Ya estamos solicitando el, el, que aprueben el programa y el presupuesto para realizar esta jornada móvil el próximo año en, por estas fechas, en agosto también. Y por hoy, ya el 28 de agosto estará llevándose a cabo con el apoyo, y, y repito, de ustedes y de la, y la atención de la comunidad mexicana, el, el Consulado Móvil, programado para este año en Río Grande.
Bonasimas gracias.
Gracias ustedes, con permiso.
Next, uh, business and orders, item 2, Consent Agenda. Item Z, consider approval of departmental travel request. B, consider approval of minutes from previous meetings. Item C, consider approval of action taken at the meeting of RGC-EDC Board of Directors meeting held on September 25th, 2017. Item D, consider approval of action taken at the meeting of the Kelsey Bass Museum and Event Center Commission held on September 20, 2017. And item E, consider approval of minute order clarifying that number 2017-3 was assigned to the resolution approving the submission of a grant application for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant number 2785004, and to incorporate the same into the fine, the final signed copy. Any questions on that, or?
Mayor, on, uh, letter E, uh, this is where PD Department will be submitting the grant. Um, that's, uh, that's a typical grant that they submit every year.
Okay.
Chief Castillo.
Yes, uh, Mayor, this is, this, uh, it was just a correction on the, uh, they wanted the grant number on the resolution.
Right.
So, it's already just a correction that we need to submit for the grant.
Okay. This time, any other, we entertain a motion at this time?
All right, so movement.
Okay.
There's no question.
I'll send a motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consent agenda by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, she carries. Next, uh, business and orders, item 3, Resolutions. Letter A, conduct a second reading of, uh, two readings and consider approval of, um, resolution number 2, 2017-21, authorizing a project of the Río Grande City 4B Economic Development Corporation related to planning and development of streets and roads. 3A. We have, is, that's, Ms. Salinas, is she here?
No, she's in the room.
That's part of the, uh, 755 South.
Okay. Okay, so we have a...
I had some questions, but, uh, Mr. Pérez addressed those questions to me already and, uh...
Yeah, we met earlier in the week. Uh, he wanted to break down as to where the expenses, I mean, were broken down and what they entail. Uh, so we have copies for the rest of you, if you'd like that. Uh, that's the 400,000 investment from EDC.
Okay. Any other?
There, there's also a right-of-way involved for that neighborhood.
Correct.
Uh, next to, on the west side of Walmart and I, I just want to make sure that it gets, uh, done concurrent with, with this project.
Correct.
And it'll be addressed though.
Yeah.
Very well, that's it, I, I...
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, approve second reading. Commissioner Garza?
Send a motion, Mayor.
Okay, have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, she carries. Next, uh, is item 3B, conduct a second reading of two readings and consider approval of resolution number 2017-22, authorizing a project of the Río Grande City 4B Economic Development Corporation related to providing affordable housing to the city of Río Grande City.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the second reading. As you all have a flyer, they had pre-bids, two. Uh, a lot of participation from local contractors and vendors, tradesmen. Uh, already people are calling, based on the flyers that have been passed out. And on the 4th of November, they'll be also using this room to pre-qualify people and start getting them into new homes. Uh, they expect the first home to start construction.
Are we getting participation from our local vendors and local contractors?
Yes, sir. They did come to both. They've, uh, been asking questions and getting ready their documents. Those bids are due on the 27th by 3 o'clock at their Macallan office.
And we advertised this so we didn't leave anybody out locally?
Correct. They were all, uh, actually given the list of all the contractors that had done business with the city of Río Grande.
And at this, I mean, at this point, as far as advertising for people and, uh, we have a good number of interested individuals.
As well as applicants for housing?
Yes, uh, I know that I myself have personally registered, uh, three families.
Good.
They are able to call directly or go on their website. It is already on the access channel, on our Facebook, on our website.
Good.
It'll be starting on the papers, local papers. Uh, there is a big interest for this. And, um, as they see the interest, they're already looking out for other areas to continue this type of development.
Fantastic.
What is, what is the, uh, the, uh, the income, uh, maximum? I guess for a family to qualify?
They can go from a family of one, it's the 80% of the medium income as, uh, assigned by HUD. And a family of one is 30,350,000, I mean, 30,350. Uh, a family of four is 43,350. And so they, if a family, once they come in on that day and for one reason or another, they don't qualify for this year, they continue working with the family to make them eligible for the next year. Sometimes it's something as minor as correcting something on their credit, um, or establishing the, the pay history.
What type of press release are we moving on as far as this? Because this is a major accomplishment.
Yes, sir, it is. It is the first time that the city gets involved in affordable housing, uh, at this, to this, uh, type of assistance. Uh, besides the social media, we'd like to have it on the Weekend Review. A lot of people see the Weekend Review interviews done and on the YouTube videos. Um, I know that they're setting up also for the, uh, morning shows that some of the TV channels have.
Okay.
Uh, I know they did ask for a statement from you to be part of the press release that appeared in the monitor.
Yeah, if we can, uh, continue on that, uh, because again, this is great for our community and certainly surrounding communities. Um, and again, it's a joint venture that is gonna bring many benefits for future.
I think it's a very good partnership. Uh, by the way, they are also starting on the 32 for-profit, uh, part of their organization. For those that sometimes, because these are very strict income guidelines, if they go over by maybe a hundred dollars, um, sometimes because they're so strict, they're not eligible to participate, they also have their for-profit and they've already pulled out a permit to start, uh, constructing their spec home on that one. So, there's a opportunity for everyone.
Okay. Very good. So again, for those that have not heard, affordable homes are coming to Río Grande City. Do we have a motion at this time?
A moment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Commissioner Garza?
Right, sir.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. All right, do we all need some coffee? Do we need some caffeine? What do we? All right, next, uh, business and orders, item, uh, 3C, conduct a second reading of two readings and consider approval of resolution number 2017-23, authorizing a project of the Río Grande City 4B Economic Development Corporation related to construction of drainage improvements to the Arroyo Los Olmos.
This is a project, uh, with a development of funds from Walmart. Um, basically, pointing to a resolution so that EDC can put up the match with our EDA grant.
I'll send a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez. We have a...
I, I'll make a second.
Okay, we...
But there, there was some other things that need to be ironed out with the situation.
Yeah, we, we have the agreement that we're working on that we need to discuss, thank you guys, on where the state, the state, the status of that agreement is.
This resolution would be only for a commitment with the EDA grant.
Correct. Again, just to be clear, this is a commitment with the EDA grant, S. Okay, so we have a second, Commissioner, after?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next is item 3D, discussion and possible action approving resolution number 2017-24, amending the city's maximum vacation policy.
Mayor and Councilman, previously employees had been allowed to carry a max vacation, uh, which turned out to be a liability for the city and there was, uh, really no timeframe associated with it, with that. So now what, uh, staff is recommending that, uh, everyone that has the so-called max vacation hours be given a six-month, uh, timeframe to utilize or use up those hours so that we remove that liability from the city in case those people leave the city or retire or whatever. And so the whole behind, goal behind it is to remove that liability that's, uh, on the city in having, owing these max hours.
And it'd be six months?
Starting effective October 1st, you'll be allowed six, uh, six months to get rid of those.
They try to exhaust those.
We, we do need to correct the resolution because it, it states that it'll start in January 1st and, uh, that they only have it to the end of this year. So, I think there was a kind of, but we'll have our attorney clean it up to reflect, October 1st to, uh, March 30th, the beginning of October 1st.
Any other questions on this or any other issues pertaining to this?
Directors have been informed about the approach, uh, so they're all on board.
All right. We have a, we have a motion to approve. We have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next is item 4A, planning, discussion and possible action on variances, request, uh, submitted by Carlos Aguilar for the Filomón Garza subdivision. The subject property is generally located at Charco Blanco Road as Filomón Garza subdivision, Starr County, Texas.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, this subdivision has been presented before to the, both the planning and zoning and the City Commission. However, Mr. Garza, he had requested the four variances, two of them which were, uh, denied by the planning and zoning and two of them were approved. So, this point, the request is to approve the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission, which is, they, uh, requested a variance for, uh, the additional right-of-way along Charco Blanco Road, which was not approved. They need to dedicate the additional five feet, uh, right-of-way along Charco Blanco Road. You know how, uh, thin that street is?
Very narrow.
Yes, very narrow. They had requested a sidewalk, uh, variance that was approved. They don't have to do a sidewalk along Charco Blanco Road. That'd be the only, uh, part of sidewalk along that side of Charco Blanco. They had also requested a variance on the fire hydrant requirement, which was definitely not approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They had to put a fire hydrant. And the carbon gutter, again, that one, that variance request was approved. They don't have to do carbon gutter as Charco Blanco does not have carbon gutter alone. So again, to avoid any confusion, the recommendation would be just to approve the recommendation of the planning and zoning, which is denying two, uh, variance requests and approving two variance requests.
Which is, um, the memo here to the...
Correct.
Okay.
Right? We, uh, uh, really couldn't hear what... The only thing I'm reading here is that it says, uh, partially approved. So...
On the next page.
Correct. PNZ approved it or didn't approve it with some subject twos or...
Yes, uh, again, they approved two variance requests. They approved the, uh, the request for, uh, sidewalk and carbon gutter. They approved the, the request for sidewalk and carbon gutter. That has been approved. What has been denied is the variance request for a fire hydrant and an additional right-of-way. In other words, they had to do the additional right-of-way and install a fire hydrant.
So the request was partially approved?
Correct.
It's really, at this point, is, again, it's two variances that were approved and two that were denied.
Correct.
Right?
Are they going to go back to try to resolve the two that were denied or?
They're, they're already, they, both, both parties actually agreed on, on their requests. Uh, we have a developer, the chairman of the planning and zoning, and he emphasized the importance of, again, the fire, fire hydrant. We'll go back to the fire requirements and that was not, definitely not waived as required. Mayor, I move that we approve a recommendation by planning and zoning.
Okay. A motion to approve recommendation by planning and zoning as per conditions. We have a second.
And, and that's, and that's the denial of, of two of the items and approval of two of the items.
Right. Variance, as per the memo, yes.
Okay. I second that.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Next, Business and Orders Item 4B, Discussion and Possible Action on Request Submitted by Carlos Aguilar for Approval of a Final Plaid of José Luis García Subdivision. The 4.34 acre site is generally located on Turtle Drive, José Luis García Subdivision, Starr County, Texas.
Mayor.
Now I'm going to make a motion to, go ahead and go into the second session.
Okay, we have a.
I'll take it.
Okay, we have a motion to, is that the correct terminology? I'm not sure if it's.
Yes, it was sent by the attorney.
Did you have a motion on the table with, in respect to this last item?
Well, already finished.
There was a motion already?
It was already approved.
There was a motion, they approved.
Okay, but not for the, not for this one that you were just fairly going to?
Right.
No.
We're good?
Yep.
Okay, but what's the correct terminology to move into executive session at this point?
A motion made to take executive session, items out of order, reasons to discuss the items with, play with the attorney.
Okay. We have a motion at this time. Have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This time, we're going to move to executive session, this item seven, Executive Session, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney and 551.087, Economic Development Matters. Recommit from Executive Session. It is 7:28. Executive Session, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney and 551.087, Economic Development Matters. And we did meet with our attorney via phone or conference call under Executive Session. And we're moving on to item eight, Recommit Into Regular Session in Consideration of Action on Matters Discussed During Executive Session, including the following. Eight, A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Possible Economic Development Agreement Related to the St. Ives Project Under Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.071 and Section 551.078, Texas Government Code. This time, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to instruct staff to enter into agreement with the developer, contingent upon the city negotiating terms as discussed in Executive Session.
Okay, we have a motion.
I have a second.
Have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, Business and Orders Item 8B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Possible Economic Development Agreement Related to the Main Street Wi-Fi Project Under Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.071 and Section 551.078, 8B.
Mayor, I have moved to delete the, the five Wi-Fi that are not working and optimize them with the 16 Wi-Fi.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. This time, there is no action on item 8C. And we're moving back, if no one objects, we're moving back to three, Planning. And I believe it was three.
Four.
4B.
4B.
Is it four?
4B.
4B, Planning. And it's Discussion and Possible Action on Request Submitted by Carlos Aguilar for Approval of a Final Plaid of José Luis García Subdivision. The 4.34 acre site generally located on Turtle Drive, José Luis García Subdivision, Starr County, Texas, 4B.
Yes, for the recommendation from the planning and zoning is to approve. This is the area that used to be the University of Texas Pan America, now UTRGB site on 755 Country Estates.
Okay.
And it's ready for final approval.
And it was partially approved by planning and zoning?
No, this one was, it's already fully approved for.
Okay, so, let me see if I'm.
You're the previous side. The previous one is this one.
Okay. All right. We have a, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? She carries. Next is Item 4C, Discussion and Possible Action on Request by Rio Delta Engineering for Approval of a Preliminary and Final Plaid of Armando Peña. The one-acre site is generally located on FM 755 as Armando Peña Junior Subdivision, Starr County, Texas.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, this one-lot commercial subdivision is on Florida Street, 755, between Martin and Rodriguez Street. This, what used to be the North Grammar School subdivision is replatted into one lot. For commercial purposes, utilities are there. Therefore, planning and zoning consider the approval of preliminary, both preliminary and final, with obviously the conditions of, you know, number one, have the water and wastewater service agreement signed and completed before recording and including a street light to La Reforma Street. Those are the only two conditions the planning and zoning approve recommend.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza.
Second motion.
Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? She carries. Next is Item 5, Contracts and Agreements. Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action Acknowledging Fulfillment of a Lease Agreement With The Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas for Premises of 101 South Washington Street Kelsey Bass Building and Concluding Such Terms Under That Agreement.
So in the last meeting, Mayor, I was asked to go back and investigate the use and whether they were actually supporting our municipal court activities. And I've met with Judge Lopez regarding this matter and found that they're really not helping out and they're not really there.
Okay.
So we're recommending the termination.
Not to renew.
Not to renew, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, and as per the lease agreement, all right.
Correct.
Okay, do we have a?
One more minute.
Motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, have a second by Commissioner Garza. And the motion is not to.
Not to renew.
Renew the contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? She carries. Next is Item 5B, Discussion and Possible Action Approved, Action to Approve a Lease Agreement with Starr County Housing Authority for a Building Located at 204 East Nixon Street to be Used as a Police Substation. That's Item 5B. Chief? It's still a dollar, sir?
It's still a dollar. It's still a dollar. And this is the same contract that we had last year. And we, we, the crime victims have been having domestic violence support groups at that location once a week. And we've been talking to Mr. Rios and I think we're also going to get started a small closet that we could keep clothes for somebody that might need in the future. You know, have a burnt house or, you know, somebody that doesn't have clothes because we, we do get a lot of donations. So, you know, we, we put in that a little bit more to use than what we have in the past. But it, the, the officers still go by there. You know, we, we like internet and stuff like that. And in that area, we do use a wireless card, so we're still using the facility.
I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? She carries. Next, thank you, Chief. 5C, Discussion and Possible Action to Renew the Professional Services Agreement with Hollis, Rutledge and Associates.
Mayor, Mr. Rutledge and Company have been very, they've been contributing to the, the ability for the city to go after grants. They've done multiple grants throughout this past year, FEMA, the Main Street Grant, the Bulletproof Fest, to name a few. So they continue to be a positive influence and again, allowing the city to have the ability to go after funds that we otherwise would not have.
Mr. Rutledge, would you have any words you would like to add to that?
Mayor, members of the council, again, I appreciate the confidence that I've been given by the council and the staff. I've worked real closely with the staff and I with the new city manager. As you know, there's been quite a bit of activity. I think you might have gotten a copy of the report in detail of some of the current work that we've been doing, state and federal, and then the accomplishments on the second page. But basically, we tried to, uh, we've gotten about a 1,400, almost a million, $400,000 in awards this past year and a half. Uh, we've applied for a total of 3.4, 3.5 million. And we have a pending applications under review for 1,800,000-plus dollars. What is not here, of course, is equipment and some other items that we have been able to obtain that aren't necessarily dollar amounts in terms of grants. But some of the other things that we've been doing, cradle to grave, is we not only monitor grants that the city manager will then decide and your department has decide which ones to pursue. But then we, once they make it, the decision to go after it, we rewrite the grant. If we're successful, our betting averages obviously have been, have proven here to be very good. And we then administer the grant for compliance. Your city manager is, of course, very well aware of the critical need to make sure that not only, it's easy to get a grant, but you want to make sure that you comply with all the assurances, regulations, and that at the end of the day, there's no audit findings in other areas. So we do all of the, all of the above from cradle to grave. I'm pleased to tell you that we've also worked on other issues, some of you of which are aware of, that are not necessarily reported here. They're not necessarily at monetary value, in value, but still are valuable. And I want to thank you so much for the opportunity of having come to Rio Grande and to serve the public and to serve you well and our ratio in the rate of return of investment so that the public knows, so far, not, not every year do we, it, it varies by the year, but our ratio, as I've discussed with, with your city manager, has been, for every dollar you've invested with us, you're getting $19 back. That's basically the ratio. And so we're pleased with that. That may not, don't hold me to that every year, but, but we've been, we've, we've, we've done good so far. And again, thank you so much for the opportunity of working with you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Do we have a?
The motion, Mayor, to approve?
Have a motion to approve the contract. We have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Item 5D, Discussion and Possible Action to Ratify the Inter-local Agreement with the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District for Food Service for the Boys and Girls Youth Club Participants.
Mayor and Councilman, this is a typical agreement that has to be put together between Boys and Girls Club and the school district every year. And this is so they can continue to receive the food that they provide to the kids.
entertain a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Rutledge, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, Business and Orders Item 5E, Discussion and Possible Action on Not Acknowledging Fulfillment of Melden &amp; Hunt Contract and Concluding Such Service for the TWDB Lift Station Project, 5E.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilman, this again was really just trying to acknowledge the fulfillment of the contract by Melden &amp; Hunt. As they were previously contracted to work on the lift station project.
And that contract was concluded, they already paid them in full and?
The contract was for 177,250. They have billed to date 147,175. Two of the items that were left pending were those that deal with construction, the construction management and the construction staking. And then, of course, they had like about 15% left, the construction management, which is about 1,575. That amount has not been paid.
But was it already satisfied, our portion as far as the contract itself?
Delivery.
Delivery of?
Of services and products.
All right. We entertain the motion at this time. We have a motion, approve. We have a second. Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next is Item 6A, City Manager's Report. Discussion and Possible Action to amend the Rio Delta Consulting Agreement to Include the TWDB Lift Station Project, 6A.
So we had contracted Rio Delta for, as a city engineer, in order for them to be able to participate in, in helping us develop the lift station project design. This is basically the process to allow them to, to do that for the city because it was not as part of the original scopes. It needs to be included in the contract in order for them to continue.
Okay. Any other questions on that or discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Also.
Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? She carries. Next is Item 6B, Discussion and Possible Action on the Selection of an Energy Consultant to assist the city in negotiating energy pricing and authorizing staff to enter negotiations and execute contract with the most qualified applicant.
Mayor and Councilman, as you know, the contract, the existing contract we have on the utilities is about to expire at the end of December. And so we went out with an RFQ. We had some metals coming in from different suppliers of, of energy consulting firms. And we created a committee that included a finance director, city secretary and myself. We evaluated the submitals and after we scored them, Marco A. Arredondo scored the highest. And that is our recommendation for consideration for you guys to go into agreement for us to go out and, and get the best rate available. That is not determined until they go out officially. And Mr. Marco, you might want to expand on that, on how that works and how quickly that can be done once we enter an agreement for locking a better rate.
Hello, sir. I'm Marco Arredondo. I was actually raised in San Benito, so I'm a little bit further south than you guys or west if you really look at the map. The east, I'm sorry. When I was talking to Mr. Perez and, and your committee, the way we go out for an energy contractor and I handle the city of far, city of Edinburgh is we go out there, we put an RFP out together, we ask the, the retail providers to actually give us quotes based on how much energy we use today. And the way we do it with cities is we actually ask them to give us the. how much energy we use today, and the way we do it with cities is we actually ask them to give us the, a bandwidth, like minutes on a cellphone plan, where we can increase the energy of the city by up to a hundred percent, or even down to zero, and they maintain the, the same price. Because a lot of companies will say, we'll give you this real good price, but if you get out five or ten percent beyond what you use or below, we're gonna bill you for it anyway, you owe it to us. So we gotta make sure that those contracts give the city the flexibility, if we're gonna go into energy conservation and we drop our, our usage by twenty-five percent like we did at San Benito CSD, then we wanna make sure that we're still paying the same price and we're not penalized. And so that's the kinda contract we're gonna look for, we're gonna also make sure that every cost in the energy price is included. Right now, your TCAP contract passes all the risk to the city. So they said, we're gonna give you this price, but if, we're gonna charge you for this, this, and this, and this, so the contract that the city will be signing that we're, we're gonna put in the RFP will be a true fixed price on the energy. Right now, prices are looking, and, and we talked with Mr. Perez, about three-point-eight to three-point-nine cents per kilowatt hour for the energy portion. Right now, I think you're paying over, with TCAP, over seven cents, I think you saw, saw me the contract, so that might equate to a twenty-five percent reduction in your budget for electricity for the city, and that's typically next to your, your administration budget. Energy is probably the next largest budget of the city. Uh, we were also asked to work with you guys on, on lighting up some of your parks, working with AEP, I'm an ex-AEP design engineer, I'm actually a registered professional engineer, so we're gonna look at some of your lighting downtown as part of the services, not just the energy contract, but we're also gonna help the city with their sewer plants and a lot of projects that y'all are presently working on. I, I know that, uh, they tell us that when, with TCAP, you wanna add a meter, they send you a letter and tell you how to do it. No, we're, we're actually gonna track every meter that you have, we're gonna, we're gonna GPS them down, we're gonna create a map on Google Earth. But we find out when we work with cities, first thing we gotta find out is, where's everybody, who's on first? Does the meter really yours? I know, uh, Lizette was telling me, there are some questions on whether you're actually paying for some meters. And it happens at, at Webb County, with our client, since the beginning of time, the DPS was paying for a meter from the county, and the county was paying for a meter from the DPS, and, and, and we finally got them switched, but it's a matter of finding them and, and getting it all on paper. We're gonna track every ener- every meter, gonna create an Excel spreadsheet so you know what it used the year before, and this year, so you know if you're using more or less energy, and we're gonna find out why. City of FAR with the wastewater, we actually track the, the energy costs for all the water and wastewater. So when you go out for your budgets for water and wastewater, you actually know what it's costing you per gallon of water for your energy, and, and use those budgets to help you make sure that you're recovering the revenue. There's a lot that can be done with an energy contract, and, and that's what our firm specializes in, we finally said, you know what? We're gonna work with cities, let's help them get the data and the information, and we'll do all that as part of the agreement to make sure that we give your staff all the information they do to make the right decisions, and if you have a question, they always have the data to back it up. And, and I could go on, but that's really kinda like the broad source of what we're after here with, with the city.
Can you touch on identification of the, uh, usage of energy by square footage?
Yes, uh, what we've done with the school districts, because it was a necessity, there, there was a House Bill, uh, thirty-six ninety-three and, and Senate Bill twelve, where they actually wanted to track every school per year, cost per square foot per year of energy per meter on that school campus. They actually were trying to drive it down to cost per square foot per year per student. But our spreadsheets, when we, when we get through with your, with your city, we'll find out the square footage of your buildings, we're gonna put it on the Excel spreadsheet, so you know what your cost per square foot per year is for building. Should be right around a dollar fifty per square foot, if everything is right, the lighting, the air conditioning, if it's higher than that, then there's room for improvement. Just so you'll know, that's why we do that, there's benchmarks from, from the energy world that says, this is a healthy building, is it an unhealthy building? So, so, yeah, thank you, I, I don't wanna tell them a whole lot, and they're gonna say, what's he talking about?
One question that I have, that I, I, I told Mr. Perez is, do you all provide, this is just something that, that I've heard from other cities, do you all provide any, uh, any services, uh, to city employees?
Benefits.
Benefits from?
Yeah, what, we've actually told, because you, several companies, the law prohibits you from using a commercial contract and a residential contract on the same contract, all right? Because the, the law is there to protect the citizens, it doesn't have a professional help them, and they have the right, and you see it at home, you can get out of the contract with a hundred and fifty dollars penalty anytime you want. So what we will do is if a city employee asks us, then we will work with them on helping them obtain the best contract for their house, but it's not something that we're gonna do, because to do it for everybody, you might have a thousand employees, and that, and I tell you what, it's a lot of work, because every house is different, if you, if you've read those contracts, if you use five-hundred kilowatt hours or less, you're gonna be better on, on a different contract than if you use between five-hundred and a thousand, and a thousand and two thousand. So it is a very complicated process, but we've helped whoever asks us, we will, we will work with them.
Would you all be able to provide it if an employee approaches you all or calls you all, and?
Yeah, we'll, we'll. If they identify themselves, we'll help them with it, because I'll tell you what, it's more complex, I don't know how people do it that aren't in the business to figure out what the best contract is for your house. Because, uh, uh, my VIP customers, like you say, all of my clients, I will usually deal with whoever comes, and Marco, what do I do? You know, and it's, it is tough, it is tough. And I usually let my, my son is a Rice graduate electrical engineer, I'm, I'm, I'm a A&amp;I, old school, but, uh, I actually let him run all the spreadsheets, because those young kids, man, I tell you what, you gotta set up a spreadsheet to do a residential rate. Because we gotta look at your bill from your house, and it varies from month to month. So we gotta look at the average it is over the year and figure out what's the best rate for that one house, for that one employee. And, and then if they don't like it, they'll break it in six months, and here we go again, but yes, we will work with them. At no extra cost, okay, because I know, I know that contract, they, they just gave me a professional services contract from your attorney, and I, I read all that stuff, and I was like, man! It's okay, though, it's not the hardest engineering contract I've ever had to sign.
So, uh, how quickly, could, and once that contract is executed, will be able to lock in the best rate?
Yeah, right now, the way I look at it, if they approve this, we'll, we'll put together an RFP, and we've already have one, we used it for Edinburgh, we used it for FAR, we'll tailor it for you, for you guys. We'll probably have it ready for you guys to review next week, then we have to advertise for two weeks, and we'll get all the quotes. Energy is still low, they're closing some, some coal plants, so it's a little unstable right this minute, but we're still in the, in the low three-eights, uh, uh. Probably by December one, uh, we, or the, middle of December, we'll have a, we'll probably be able to execute a contract. The contract isn't until December thirty-first, so we'll have ten to twenty business days to, to, uh, switch over to the new provider.
So is that still in the months that are best to, uh, go and negotiate for the better rate?
The best months to negotiate are usually between October, November of every year, and March to May of the following year. So you're in one of the best windows, if you didn't, like Edinburgh, that we're, we're going out for an RFP, actually, the twentieth, and advertising, and they don't expire till June of next year, so we're actually, we're gonna put it out now, we expect to execute before the end of the year, but with them, we have the option to drag it out till March or April if we don't like what we see. We've got to do something, if we, if we don't like what we see, we would probably sign a short-term contract for, for six months or something to get us to the, the city of FAR, we executed three short-term contracts all this year to get us to sign a contract now, we're actually probably gonna execute a contract in the next two weeks for them. But we will do whatever it takes to make sure that we get the best price for the city, and we're not gonna sign a long-term contract at a bad price. You know, we, energy's supposed to be about the same for the next ten years, but it is at all-time lows, the price that we have today for energy, we didn't see since two-thousand and one, since the regulation started. So if you could have signed a contract in two-thousand and one at three-point-nine cents, got it for twenty years, it took twenty, almost twenty years for it to come down. It's been higher than this eighty-two percent of the time since two-thousand and one. Eighteen percent, this amount, or just a little bit lower. You're asking all the right questions, because I, I can't just tell them everything, so, any other questions? But yes, uh, right now is a good time to execute the, the longest possible contract you, you can get.
And just to be clear on the cost for the consulting fees, what are we looking at?
It loo- it's, right now, we've got you at four mils, we don't really know what your annual spend is, our, our typical fee is from three mils to five mils, for cities, uh, it usually ends up right around three mils, uh. We tried to get all the information from the city so that we would know exactly what we're looking at. Right now, the, the agreement we have is at four mils to be paid by the retailic provider. All right, if you're using three million kilowatt hours a year, that'd be about twelve thousand dollars a year for everything we're doing. If you're using six million, of course, twenty-four thousand, but I know we needed to move, and I said, you know what, I, I really, I just said, you know what, let's just do four mils, I split the difference, and if it comes out, it comes out, either way, uh, we're gonna do what we're gonna do. We're here for the long haul, we've been, San Benito CSD, we've been handling since two-thousand and five, uh, uh, city of FAR since two-thousand and six. So our customers, once we have all this data and we're working with the city, it's kinda like we become part of your staff. And we will reduce our fee in the long run if, if now it's become more maintenance, but in the beginning, we've gotta figure out where you're at. And, and Adam, my brother, uh, he's, he's my foot soldier, he's the one that's gonna be out there, and I'll tell you, city of Edinburgh, we're gonna have to ask AEP for four meters, aren't we? We cannot find four meters, and he was, he's been out there for six weeks, and we're GPSing them, and we work with se- with wastewater to find the sewer lifts, because some of those, you can't see they're underground, but we came down, we can't, we can't identify four meters. So we finally just said, hell, and I'm an ex-AEP design engineer, so if I can't find it, it's bad.
Well, uh, I hope that doesn't happen to us.
Well, you know, you don't know unless you're looking, right, but it's kinda, you pay the bill because you don't wanna disconnect your life.
No, no, and absolutely, that, that's critical, obviously, to have all the, uh, uh, systems in place and make sure that, that, uh, everything is accounted for. Uh, and it sounds like, based on what you're describing, you will have it in a spreadsheet, some type of format, and providing all that.
And it'll be tabbed out, you'll have one main budget that has everything on it, and then tabbed out parks, lights, uh, uh, sewer, water, it'll all be tabbed out every month. We input the bills every month, so i- at any month, you know exactly what's going on.
Okay.
At the end of the day, is to get a better rate for saving the city, uh, these taxpayer funds.
Okay, that's the main thing, so staff recommends approve?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve, mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, uh, am I missing anything, or since we moved around? All right, it looks like we're done with the agenda at this time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Let's move.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, have a second by Commissioner Garza, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned. It is seven-fifty-seven PM.